This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. I would take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Move to approve.
This is Maggie.
Okay, Rick and Maggie. All right, a motion to approve the agenda was made by Rick, seconded by Maggie. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. And we got to do a roll call because of the Zoom meeting. So Bruce. I can't hear you. Okay. He gave a thumbs up. Rick?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Aye.
Sean? And?
Aye.
Jurick votes aye. Passed unanimously. And now I can hear you. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the local 105 liquor license permit application. Mike?
Mayor, I'll handle that. Thank you. Enclosed tonight, we have an application for a new liquor license for both an on sale intoxicating liquor and a Sunday liquor license from a Michelle S. Kotek. And I believe Michelle is on the line tonight.
I am here, Michael. I don't know how to turn my camera on.
Well, I'll let you continue to try to deal with that. While I continue to give additional background. You may have to just flip the switch up at the top of your computer where the aye is.
It told me that somebody has to make me the presenter. I don't know what that means.
No.
But anyway.
Anyway, I'll continue on that Michelle Kotek is proposing to operate at this facility as DJ MS Enterprises LLC doing business as the local 105 at both 105 Main Street East, which is the former the former wine bar building and also 107 Main Street East, which is the outdoor patio adjacent and to the east of the building. The applicant is proposing that this liquor operation business be eligible to become operative at or beyond April 1st. The licensing period for this liquor license is April 1 through March 31st. And we're here tonight at the public hearing because a requirement in the city code under chapter 110.16 issuance of license subdivision C allows for or provides for when we receive an application that the council shall afford the opportunity to the public to comment either for or against the issuance of the license. And I'll have the mayor open up the public hearing shortly. But just as additional information, the applicant has paid all of her license fees, provided the appropriate proof of financial responsibility and has provided proof that she has an interest in the property through the lease that she has with the building property owner. Property taxes and utility bills for both properties are current at the time of this memo. And then in your packet as well is Police Chief Garice has conducted a background check on the applicant, which we attached and is indicating that there are no disqualifiers preventing the applicant from being granted a license. I'll let you go through the public hearing before I get to the point of making a recommendation. But Mayor, now would be the time to open the public hearing to see if there are any comments from anyone in the public.
Okay, I would take a motion to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing.
So moved. Maggie?
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Sean? Okay, a motion was made by Maggie, seconded by Sean to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye, but we'll call it. Bruce?
Aye.
Rick?
Can you hear me?
Maggie?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
And Jurick's votes aye. All right, is there any public that wants to talk about this? Is there any public that wants to talk about the liquor license at 105? Is there anybody that wants to talk about the liquor license at 105, local, the local 105? Hearing none, I take a motion to close the public hearing and open up the regular council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Maggie, seconded by Sean. All in favor say Bruce, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
And Jurick votes aye. Okay, Mike?
With there being no negative comments, Mayor, and with what I've provided to you, we'd recommend approval of the on sale intoxicating liquor license and the Sunday liquor license with the following three conditions that are noted in my memo to you. One is the license premises includes both the building at 105 and the outdoor patio area adjacent to the east side of the building at 107. And for those that are kind of wondering why, as you look at the map that was attached, the outdoor patio is technically a separate premises and has a separate legal description from the building property, which is why we have to encompass both, both of those. That the Sunday liquor license not be issued and that the liquor establishment not be allowed to open on Sunday until a copy of the business's health license from Scott County or they contract with the state of Minnesota is provided to the city because the condition of being able to operate and have Sunday liquor is that food is available to be sold to accommodate liquor sales. And then finally, that the liquor licensee is required to comply with the requirements of resolution 14-04-07-03, which granted conditional use permits C2-213, which allowed for the construction and the opening of an outdoor patio area for eating and drinking at the 107 location. That has been or was complied with when it was a wine bar. And so those same conditions still exist under the CUP. And so with those three conditions, we'd recommend approval of the two licenses.
Okay, does somebody want to offer a motion on that?
Actually, I got a question.
Sure.
Are we going to take and is that going to be deducted? There'd be 50% off the liquor license for her too?
When you take, when you take action as you have in this, we've already reduced the on sale intoxicating liquor license at the level that you approved on January 5th. If you take further action to reduce the Sunday liquor licenses tonight, then we will provide for a refund on the portion that would be due back to the liquor license holders. So based on your actions, we're treating all of the liquor licenses the same.
Even though they weren't affected by the closures, which was the real reason that we were doing it for the established businesses.
Well, you've chosen to change the liquor license fees. And when you did that on January 5th, you decreased the intoxicating on sale liquor license from 2,700 to 1,350. We don't get to pick and choose who gets that. You've set the license fee and anybody that applies and renews their license is at that same amount.
Can I ask Scott Riggs, our attorney, if that's correct? Do we have to offer it to everybody? I mean, the real reason we've reduced that rate was because people were essentially closed down for five or six months last year that had paid their liquor license. It really wasn't it was more, my understanding was more of a rebate for last year's liquor license.
Yeah, Sean, I understand what you're saying and what you've adopted at this point in time is that it's across the board. It's an unbiased application of it. There certainly could be an argument that a new license shouldn't be treated the same way and get the same benefits. That's not what you have adopted right now. But if you want to direct staff, certainly Mike and I can look at that and come up with some other approach.
Well, I think this from the rest of the council, I mean, I I thought we were doing it because those businesses were severely affected by the closing of the, by the state. And this obviously, nothing against the new owners, but they weren't, they haven't been affected yet. Certainly if they go forward and get affected this year and there's more closings, then I would think for next year, they would be able to partake in that.
Yeah, and Sean, you're right that that was our initial discussion, you know, based on what we knew at that point in time. I think it would be very unfair to Michelle to impose a higher liquor license. This is an unknown. I'm so pleased that she's willing to take the the risk and the opportunity to open a business on Main Street. We set the fees and I think to Scott's point, we should look at it as an unbiased decision. We don't know what this year is going to bring, you know, it's still kind of an unknown. So I would not vote to increase the fees for Michelle and keep it at the current that we adopted.
I feel the same way as Maggie.
Okay. Anybody else? Otherwise, I'd take a motion to approve this liquor license.
Rick here, so move.
Rick, move. Approve the liquor license. Is there a second?
Maggie will second.
And Maggie, second?
Second.
What? I'm sorry, I got some backfeed here. Maggie, you seconded it, right?
I think I did. Yeah, there were a couple of voices that spoke up, so.
Yeah, I heard Maggie. So with that, is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Bruce, how do you vote?
Aye. Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
And Jurick votes aye. Thank you.
Good luck, Michelle. Good luck.
Thank you all very much. I just have to say that I want to, I want to thank everyone. The city has been absolutely nothing but outstanding in supporting me and walking me through this process. So I'm getting really excited and hopefully we can open sooner rather than later.
I do too.
Good.
It's exciting. Thank you all very much.
All right, the next thing on the agenda is something to do with Mr. Stika.
Mayor, we have in front of you a resolution recognizing Mr. Glenn Stika for his 40 plus years of service to the city of New Prague that I'd like to say that we'd be able to hand him the car keys to a new Cadillac or something like that. But unfortunately, the best I can do to acknowledge all of the things that he has done for the city is to at least provide this resolution of appreciation, I think acknowledging the council and the city's appreciation for all that he has done for the last 40 years. That it seems like just yesterday, it was July of 1980 and Glenn was just first arriving here in the city. And here it is, February of '21, 40 plus years later. And I think Glenn, what are you done? How many days and hours you got left? You got it counted yet?
I don't know how, six days, six working days. So not that I'm counting or anything.
As you can see and read in the resolution, Glenn has worked for the city in the various positions to include meter reader, water operator, senior water operator, water supervisor, maintenance supervisor, and finally Director of Public Works. And when you take a look at it, Glenn has spent nearly two thirds of his entire life working and serving the residents of this community. And we are very hopeful that he continues to have good health and that he's going to be able to enjoy many, many months up at the lake after he gets the kitchen remodeling done for his wife. And so what I'd like the mayor and council to do is if you'll approve the resolution and then Mayor, if you would read the words, you know, it doesn't matter how many times we do this. I think it still acknowledges and reinforces the efforts and the the things that Glenn has truly done for us.
Okay, so with that, I would take a motion to approve the resolution 21-02-16-01.
So moved.
And I'll second.
Sean moved and Maggie seconded. With that, any discussion? Otherwise, Bruce, how do you vote?
Thanks very much, Glenn. Have a great retirement. I vote aye.
Thank you.
Rick?
Aye.
Maggie?
Congratulations, Glenn. I'm so happy for you. I vote aye.
Thank you.
Sean?
I vote aye. And Glenn, thank you for 40 plus years of service. That's an incredible run.
And Jurick votes aye. And I had three years left in high school when you started with the city, just on.
I'm hiring people or I've hired people that haven't but wasn't born when I started. That's even worse.
So with that, state of Minnesota, counties of Scott and Leesure, city of New Prague, city of New Prague, resolution number 21-02-16-01, recognizing Glenn J. Stika. Whereas Glenn J. Stika has faithfully served the city of New Prague and the New Prague Utilities Commission in the positions of meter reader, water operator, senior water operator, water supervisor, maintenance supervisor, and director of public works in the water, street, and public works department for the city of New Prague from July 27, 1980 to February 25, 2021. And whereas he has always effectively, conscientiously, and professionally represented the city of New Prague and the New Prague Utility Commission in a distinguished fashion. And whereas his efforts have been largely responsible for the excellent reputation growth and overall well-being of the city of New Prague and the New Prague Utility Commission. And whereas all citizens of the city of New Prague have been the beneficiary of his efforts, talents, and abilities for the past 40 plus years. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of New Prague, Minnesota, that this community and city council express and record their esteem and high appreciation of his character, dedication, and contributions, which have earned him the respect and friendship of all who have had the pleasure of working with him. And be it further resolved that this city council extend best wishes to Glenn J. Stika for many years of good health and happiness in his retirement. This resolution is adopted by the city council of the city of New Prague on the 16th day of February, 2021. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Listening to that resolution, it kind of sounds like I couldn't hold a job, but appreciated from everybody. You know, there was a lot of talented people that I worked for, still do. And have had a lot of people under me that helped the city out, made me look good and kept things going. So it was really a team effort. I do appreciate all the support I've gotten through the years from people. Like I said, I've worked for a lot of great people. A lot of those people are unfortunately passed away or gone. But learned a lot. So a lot of good opportunities. And I do appreciate that. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Glenn. Take care. Going to miss seeing your faces on these meetings.
It's going to be, it'll be okay. You'll get along well, I mean. Better looking than I am, so, you know.
Would you come back and play your guitar for us or something?
15 minutes before the council meeting starts.
There you go. A little entertainment. Love it.
Amy, hopefully he can get your kitchen constructed in the time that's needed.
I just wanted noted that it's his kitchen too. Not just my kitchen.
That it is.
Congratulations, honey.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I see our kids are on too, so.
They see, congrats, Dad and Tom Hanks.
My goodness.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's a comedian that's related to me. It's a little younger, but related to me, so.
Runs in the family.
Yeah, digs after his mother.
I don't know.
Digs after grandpa.
Yeah, both grandpas. Thank you, everybody. That was very kind of you.
Yep, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for signing on.
You deserve it, Glenn.
Thank you.
Thanks, Glenn.
Next up is Mr. Wetska.
Thanks, everybody. I'm just going to piggyback off of kind of the, what Mike said. And for Glenn and I'm here on behalf of the New Prague baseball group, which basically encompasses the Orioles, the New Prague Youth Baseball Association, and Trojan baseball. And when we heard Glenn was retiring, we got together, we needed to do something for him just to he was so instrumental in the stadium project several years back when we hosted the amateur tournament. And you talk about, you know, being on council meetings and I don't, I don't know that Glenn ever missed one of our baseball stadium meetings. And some of them went really, really long, but his knowledge of, you know, all things New Prague and being so supportive of the community, not just baseball, but everybody. But I met up with Glenn today at the high school parking lot. So Glenn, you can take that black bag out. I told him he couldn't open it until the council meeting tonight. So as you go ahead and open that, I, we kind of worked with Lyle Lumbric out at Lumbric Bats. And what better to represent Glenn's work with, with the baseball programs and the baseball group over the years, especially during the stadium renovation. We have created for Glenn to hang up somewhere, whether that's at the cabin or at the house, wherever he wants to put it. But just in recognition of his service to the city of New Prague, it states across the top, city of New Prague, Glenn Stika, service years. Yeah, thanks, Glenn. That's perfect. July 27, 1980 through February 25, 2021. Friend of New Prague baseball. That could also read friend of a lot of people in New Prague and the New Prague community and really the city of New Prague and just our thanks. So with that, Glenn, congratulations on a great run with the city. We appreciate everything you've done, not only for the baseball group and Memorial Baseball Stadium, but the city of New Prague. Enjoy retirement and my offer will stand meeting at a local establishment upon retirement when we can do so safely. Congratulations, Glenn. Thanks for everything.
Thanks, Tom. Appreciate it. That's really nice. And you don't find this hard to believe, Tom, but I did follow direction this time and I did not peek at it, so.
Awesome. Awesome. We were going to try to get you three days off on that city resolution, but Mike said no.
Every time I ask for three days off, he says no. I don't know what the story is with that.
I don't know. That should have come to council.
Thanks a lot, Glenn. Take care.
That's really nice. The baseball group was a fun group to work with. There was a lot of great volunteers. You know, I said a lot of times when, you know, you'd get a little stressed out or, you know, you were frustrated because it did sometimes take up some extra time that you Sundays didn't have. But when you really stop to think about it, there was so many people on that whole committee and group of people that they were volunteering their time. Yeah, I went to meetings, but during the day I was getting paid. So that was a whole different deal. So there was a lot of great people that they put a lot of time into that. And me and Tom joked about it today. Thank God we didn't have a year like this. That would have just screwed up. So, no, that was, thank you. That's really nice. I appreciate it and be sure to thank everybody else.
Will do. You're welcome, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. The next on the agenda is city council return to meeting in public versus electronic go to meeting format. Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, enclosed in your review tonight, and I might request some, for some assistance from Ken. But we tried to take a look at trying to answer as best we can, taking a look at the kind of the legal and the practical requirements of trying to return in person to meetings at city hall and what some of the issues and challenges are, while again trying to identify the the audio and the visual equipment improvement challenges that we have. And so we tried to identify and separately list for your review and consideration. Besides what summary we have on pages one and two, then on page three, you've really got, you know, an identification of the benefits of upgrading the AV that issues if we try to return to city hall with the existing AV equipment and trying to still be able to, you had given us an indication at the last meeting that you really didn't think that we should need to continue to have the electronic meeting. I guess, I think as staff and in total, we believe that that's a necessary component going forward and would strongly recommend against trying to return and not have that able to be integrated into the, to the meeting to be able to use updated audio video. I think we've had numerous discussions here from this last fall and into the first part of the year here a little bit is that we still have carryover funds remaining from our former CARESAC monies that are available to utilize to be able to integrate from a presentation standpoint in the formal meeting to engage the electronic meeting and to have available for presentation when we do return. And we don't think that, at least it's not our recommendation, to return to the in-person meetings with the conditions as we look at what's there. And the governor obviously loosened that up a little bit more as far as being able to use a little greater capacity. I think, Jim, if I recall, those were new and came out Friday. At the time, we were putting this together to include in the packet. So I'm not certain that we necessarily have the most up to date and maybe you have something there. And when we try to take a look at it, you know, we can't have staff available that wouldn't be in the meeting room if we don't have the electronic meeting capabilities. They're not able to watch and see what's going on in the meeting to be able to come into the meeting at the appropriate time. It doesn't allow for any external participation. We know we're going to need to be able to have that tool available in March when we bring to you information about calling for a bond sale to do the financing for our summer project this summer. Because the consultant from Springstead, or excuse me, now Baker Tilly, is not legally able to attend meetings in person. And the only way that she could formally participate would be through an electronic meeting. So as we try to weigh all of the audio visual, anybody coming in as well is going to have to be masked up. And that if you take a look at some of the information that Ken has, and I would ask him maybe to go through a brief summary. But we probably have, when you take a look at compared to the other governmental entities in Scott County, we probably have, I don't know if it's the worst, but the most minimal capabilities in trying I don't know if it's worst, but the most minimal capabilities in trying to simply in the past record meetings and then to put them up for play. Right now, when we get done with the electronic meeting, Ken is able to take that and we can take that immediately to the website. If we try to go back to the videoing camera situation, we're gonna have troubles with microphones, we're gonna have trouble with audio AV materials being picked up. Then if we do record them, then it's gonna have to go back with the AV person to the high school where it's gonna take them a couple of hours to put it together. And so we think that it's still best to continue with the electronic meeting format until we can get the upgraded audio visual and hopefully by the time that that's ready to go, hopefully much more of these immunizations will have been taken care of and we're able to actually return to that. Ken, you wanna pick up an ad from your research around the county on this topic of what you might recommend?
I think, Mike, you summarized it pretty good. Overall, I, I would say, if you look at the one matrix we had in the chart, we are behind in the technology arena as far as AV for our council meeting recordings. We really have no availability to do most of the things other cities can do, other than when we aren't meeting by go-to-meeting or what we had done prior to COVID, we were able to record it and get it online, but we suffered audio issues. We had issues with lack of appropriate camera angles. We didn't have multiple cameras, it was hard to see the screen and people talking at the same time and a number of other issues. So we were getting by minimally and most of the other cities have really bypassed us in, in terms of that. And I think I mentioned it before, you know, COVID or not, this is something I would recommend that we do just for a proper audio visual recording and, you know, archiving of our meetings and really think it's the right thing to do moving forward. But it also, you know, God forbid, there's another pandemic in the future, we'd be set up for that. And, you know, I don't think this is anything, you know, opulent by any means. It gets us a functional system. And I think the one thing that was key for me was talking to our IT consultant, CTS, it helped with the computer system that we implemented here in 2020, or last year in 2020, was that we initially tried to get them to design a system for us and they just said it's too specialized and, and not something they'd feel comfortable with even doing from, you know, their expertise in IT. So this really is a audio visual type situation and ended up finding a couple of companies that could do it and EPA in particular has been the vendor for Scott County for a number of years and we talked to their staff that utilize it and have been for a number of years and they had nothing but good things to say about it, easy to use and provides a good visual documentation, you know, that can be used for posting on the website, having the live stream, et cetera, and I think this, you know, would allow consultants to remote connect in. You could also have the public connect in and comment, but most cities don't use it that way. Most cities still, if you want public comment, the public has to come in. But what it does allow for is that live streaming for people that can't fit into the room. You can be in another room, you go way down into your car until it's safe to come into the room under these pandemic orders at, at this point. So I think that was kind of the, the key takeaway for me is that it's just a specialized system and can be utilized for years going forward. And if we ever move to city hall, the equipment can come with us. And that was another big, big thing as far as my review of it.
Ken and Mike, what other uses can this have? So obviously city council meetings, would it be used for other city meetings when you are meeting with outside consultants or other individuals?
Yeah, Maggie, we would intend to use it for all of our board and commission meetings that would wanna be livestreamed or just simply recorded. So we could use it for all our board and commission meetings and yes, we could also use it for larger scale trainings and other presentations that we have. I know we've had our health insurance meetings where typically have had to, you know, bring in the, the health insurance people in person. This could be done remotely. We could do trainings remotely. I know I've had a few occasions where, you know, it was more than we could fit in a conference room and it would be nice to have that availability and this would afford that to easily be done as well.
Thank you.
So do we have the full $78,000 for this in that CARES money then, Mike?
Yes, we do.
I think this is what I originally, I guess, when, when I mentioned that I wanted to get council meetings back. I also wanted, I was thinking about this for consultants to be able to remote into us as a group where we won't have to pay, I'm gonna pick on Scott, so don't, don't get mad at me, but you know, he charges for his drive time, I would imagine, from, from the office down here and back home. And it could save money there with some of the consultants and stuff. So I think it's, I think it's a good thing and it's, it's a step forward and if we have the money.
I agree. Sean, weren't you the one, you, you had something against it, didn't you?
Yeah, I was fine with the, the, the old way with Mitch in there recording it, putting it on YouTube or on the city website. I, I'm not interested in spending, I don't care if it's CARES money or government money or whatever, $80,000 almost or what's the 126, is that a different?
That was a different proposal, yeah.
Okay, so almost $80,000 for something that could be done a lot cheaper. And I understand some of the concerns to a certain point, but, you know, I, I would much rather if we went back and there was actually city staff that was, you know, afraid to be in rooms and everything else, you know, maybe we'd pick a bigger room and we go back to utilizing the school board. It's a much bigger room. They had all the equipment. If we feel that's what we need to do, we didn't have a problem for almost two years using the school board's equipment. But that's just my take. I, I was fine the way their system worked before. I think just with a little effort, we don't need all city staff, department heads sitting shoulder to shoulder. They can, you can lump their stuff together and Glenn could come in and do his speak for two, two or three items and then he could leave and then Jim could come in. I don't think it's that hard to have, you know, Jim down in the conference room 15 minutes or 20 minutes while Glenn's speaking and then vice versa. So I, I just think there's easier ways. I don't necessarily see the need to spend $80,000 of, of our federal money. I think that money could be used maybe somewhere else better. I'd like to hold on to it to see what else is coming down the, the pipe, but that's my take, so.
I like the idea of it, you know, once we got that equipment, we've got it, we own it and, and not right now, we can pay for it. So, you know, to put this off and then, you know, in, in the sake of thinking this is gonna be over real soon, I don't, I don't agree with that, but I had, at first, I had some reservations, but I think it's a good idea. I, I, I think the, I think $78,000 would be a good investment. When we got the money to do it, let's do it.
Any other thoughts?
And I also agree that we should move forward with it. You know, it is CARES money, it is being used because of the predicament that we are currently in. But the beauty of it is, is that once we're hopefully back to normal, it still can be utilized to enhance our meetings. It can be used for training, it can be used for our consultants and we don't even know what other use it may have because once we have it, we'll probably find other reasons to use it. I think it's a good use of the CARES funds. I think it will help us, you know, interact with each other and our constituents. The beauty of it is people, it's live streamed and people can be at home, they can be making dinner, they can be hanging out with your kids and they can still be kept abreast of what's going on with the city. So if it comes to our vote, I would vote for the equipment.
Bruce?
I guess my feeling is the same as, well, when we talked about it two or three months ago about the CARES money, we decided to put this the remaining portion aside till later. I support the purchase of the equipment. I think we talked about this back then and some of the issues we talked about was to assess what our needs are in the future and what to do with the rest of the CARES Act money and possibly look at it after we did the facilities study to know what we're gonna be doing and part of our strategic planning. So we did talk about this and there was a reason, I'm trying to remember exactly what the reason was that we pushed this further into this year, but it seems to me some of it was to have a better understanding of what our needs might be this next year and also look at it comprehensively so we're just not taking the remaining of the, just because it's there to make sure that we're using it for the highest need. And if there's no higher need, I, I totally support the purchase of it. I'm not sure when is the best time to do this, but I, I totally, I support it. How much CARES Act money do we have left and how much, I, I guess I would like a better understanding of how much money is left, how much is designated? How much 499 money do we have? How much of that is designated? And have a better picture of what we're doing going into this next year because this is a very large purchase. So I, I, I don't, I feel I don't wanna be just reacting to something because I think the Zoom meetings are fulfilling our requirements. Maybe it's not the best situation, but this isn't something we're gonna have implemented in the next two months or that quickly anyway. But I totally support the idea of it and I do think that we need to do it eventually, whether it's this summer or this year or whenever.
It, it could be in place in two months if, if you were to move forward tonight.
Do you have, do you have an accounting of the remaining CARES Act money, what other things we set aside? Seemed to me there is four or five other things that we had.
Other items on there were touchless bathroom faucet, paper towel, soap dispensers was the other things. I think that was about $35,000. This item was on there. Previously it was actually a little over $80,000, but we were able to bring that down before it got brought to tonight. And then we had UV air units to be put in our return air system at city hall and the library and a couple of other city buildings. I think that was about $17,000 and all of these items could be covered yet with that remaining balance that's in there. I don't have the exact dollar amount in front of me, but everything could be covered.
I thought we came, I thought we used more with the police equipment that we used up more than the original number. I say, we still have all this excess.
Yep, so the one thing we did is we went back through the discussion from the councils to not do the touchless wall urinals or touchless stools in the bathrooms and that saved a significant amount of funds. From that, I think we initially had that budgeted for close to $70,000 alone, just for that, and it almost cut it in half by not doing the toilet type fixtures.
Can you recall for me, Ken, why did we decide not to do this at that time? And what was the discussion that we decided to push it off into, into the future?
Technology, I.
I think we just wanted to explore some options and, and we asked Mike and his staff to explore what we could do if we did not install equipment and we had some discussion about that. I think we saw some pictures of the, the current chambers and the chairs being spaced apart and where people would have to, some people sit at the dais and some people would have to sit away. We wouldn't have microphones, so there was some discussion. So I think it's just been kind of building, you know, through this exploration until finally tonight, you know, if a decision is made or not.
If, if we were to pursue this, Ken, would you come back to us with competitive bids on this then, or what would you present to us to actually finalize it? Are you saying you already did the due diligence on it?
That's what we have in front of you is the two quotes based on the specifications that are in the packet. And we've already done all the background checking with the vendors and their clients, Scott County being one of them. So no, we've already gone through that.
So you feel two quotes are adequate for this?
Yes, from the vendors that we talked with that wanted to, well, I should say, offered to provide the quotes, yes.
Was Bevcom?
Was Bevcom one of them?
Uh huh, yeah. Okay. Is that some service they do not offer?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay.
We put this out to, I think, five different companies and these are the two that I specifically heard back from. And that's not including CTS who we initially tried to go through, but it's, it's a very specialized kind of a system. So you have to go at these AV companies that do it. EPA is a very well-known entity out there. They put a number of these in recently, a lot of them with, with CARES funding in fact, and I think Scott County's input on it was, was a, a big, big one for me anyway, that they've been using them as a vendor for a number of years and I see what their equipment can do and that's 20-year-old almost equipment up there, still going strong.
That was my next question is, you know, what's the lifespan of this equipment as technology changes or is, you know, our, our use of our computers change?
Yeah, it, it operates off of a computer as kind of your main control board. That would have to be changed out probably once every four to five years, but the equipment itself, cameras are HD, the control board and all that and all that, that can be 15, 20-year easily.
Okay.
Ken, you mentioned you can move it. What would the cost of moving it be?
Just popping the tiles out of the ceiling where the cameras are mounted, along with the speakers, pretty easy to do that. And then the control board is just on a rolling cart. And then there's TVs too, very, very easy to move them.
I'm supportive of it.
Okay, any other discussion?
I'm just gonna say we had an opportunity to save $80,000 of the taxpayer money to go back to a system that worked just fine and I'm gonna vote no.
Okay.
Even if it's not this month, I mean, even if we wait another couple of months and do the Zoom meetings, eventually then hoping that most of us will have our vaccines in our arms and whatever else. So you already have yours, Duane, right? You got lucky.
I do and I was sicker than a dog last two Saturdays ago for my second one.
All right.
I'll make the motion to move it forward.
Okay, Rick made the motion to.
You, you have, you have kind of a two-pronged issue here. Whether we go back to the in-person meetings or continue to use electronic is part of the first part. The second part is whether you actually order or approve the purchasing technology equipment.
Okay. So Rick, what's your motion then?
My motion is to take the $78,000 bid and move that forward. And what else did you want, need, Mike?
Well, the second part is whether you're gonna continue the electronic meetings until we're able to get all of that set up to be able to return to do it at city hall. And Ken said likely that's gonna take a couple of months.
Well, do you wanna finish off this motion and then I'll make another one after that? One of us will make another one after that?
The, the council can handle them separately.
There you go, Duane.
I don't know if you need a motion.
What's that?
I don't know that you need a motion for that purpose.
Just a consensus for the, to move?
To move back to in-person meetings or not, or when it's safe, yeah.
Okay, so Rick made a motion to go forward with the, to buy the electronic infrastructure and install it. Is there a second?
Maggie will second.
Maggie seconds. Is there any other discussion? Hearing done. Bruce?
Hi.
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Maggie?
Hi.
Sean?
No.
And jury votes aye. Okay. Do we need a motion then to go back to the in-person meetings or should we address that once all this technology gets installed? I think we should address it when the technology gets installed, but that's my opinion.
Well, and I, I agree with you, Dwayne. I think, you know, if it's safe to move back to in-person meetings, um, then we do it at that time. Uh, once the electronic equipment is installed, you know, we're still talking about um potentially meeting at City Hall. I think making that decision to, tonight is going to be premature. So I think it just needs to be a wait-and-see situation.
Okay.
I agree.
Mary? Okay. Um, alright, next up is Ms. Stacy Finland. With Scott County Transportation and Smart Link.
May I let me uh, give a little bit of background here?
Betcha, Mike.
Um, and I'm trying to look to see whether we have uh, all of the same players, but I know we've got uh Stacy Finland, uh, let's see, do I see?
Lisa Freeze is right there. I see her.
Okay, I can't quite see her, so I'm uh, uh, sorry about that. We also have Alan Herman, the Scott County Transit Supervisor. And then I also see uh, Lisa Freeze uh, uh, from Scott County as well. So um, I think what I'll do is that I'll turn it over to uh, to both Stacy and Alan and let them explain uh Ken, can you bring it up a little bit further or you're, they're, they're going to connect in? They've got some slides that they want to perform. But they're here tonight to talk about um, the new uh, marketing program uh, from Smart Link in the Scott County Transportation Department about presenting some new transportation services to some of the smaller cities in Scott County. So with that, uh, I'll turn it over to Stacy and Alan.
Evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and defer to Alan. He'll be running through the presentation tonight, but we thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is Alan Herman. I'm with uh, uh, Smart Link and again, uh, thank you for the privilege of uh, presenting this to you tonight. Uh, Smart Link is basically uh, changed in the fact that uh, we are now mobility managers for Scott and Carver Counties. And one of those processes uh, is that we look for uh, new fundings, new ways to create uh mobility services uh, for uh, residents of Scott County. And one of those ways that we did that was actually uh, coming up with a uh, grant from the Live Well at Home uh, group. And what that does is um this grant enabled us to basically uh, um, uh, just as it talks about live well at home. It's meant to actually find services or what are, what is really needed for people to be able to live longer in their homes. So um, we applied for this grant uh, and we actually got uh, the contract approved uh, for in December of twenty twenty and that runs through the June of, of uh, twenty twenty-two. Some of the things that we'll receive from this grant would be a new outreach coordinator uh, based again, these, on these cities that we want to impact and so forth. And one of the things that the key to this uh, grant is that we are concentrating on the more rural areas of Scott County. So it would be the Elka New Market, the New Prague, the Bell Plain and the Jordan Areas. Uh, again, uh, thinking about transportation and the fact that these rural, more rural areas have more gaps or again, it's harder to have services in those areas uh, than in the more concentrated uh, uh, northern part of the, of Scott County. Another piece that we're uh, going to look at is uh, what we call the Volunteer Van Program. This is where a uh, handicap accessible minivan would be available to the communities for transportation. So in other words, um, you know, outside, we're concentrating on seniors and disabled. But again, we want to kind of uh, look at the community itself and understand uh, the different needs of the community. So for instance, uh, Bell Plain has a very large uh, senior and disabled community um versus an Elka New Market who doesn't have much for seniors uh, so forth. So the needs of those communities are then going to be definitely different and we want to understand that and understand uh, the needs of the city first. Uh, a huge part of this is also then uh, besides that van is who's going to drive the van? So the van would be uh, our thought process is we want to find volunteer drivers to uh, recruit and then uh, uh, basically run that vehicle. And then uh, as part of that, again, I talked about that is it uh, would be a handicap accessible van on that piece also. So some of the things we've already done, uh, we've actually come up with the logo as you see that, the Hop Scott uh, type logo. So this was uh, again, uh, the thought of uh, again, being able to uh, move around and, and get around to where you need to go. Uh, we will be looking at a uh, van bids, uh, three to four bids for the purchase of the vehicle. The vehicle will be county-owned, county-insured, handicap-accessible, and then also maintained by the county, but yet still driven by volunteers. And again, we want to concentrate on localized transportation. We would not be looking at the van uh, for instance, traveling to Mankato or to uh, St. Paul, those types of things. We want again uh, concentrate on the localized transportation uh, of people getting around to where they need to go. So as far as that volunteer driver concept is concerned, we want to again, look at that as far as uh, the driving of the county van, uh, the uh, Smart Link would have them, uh, the people vetted and trained uh, as far as the drivers would be concerned. Smart Link would also take the intake of the trips and schedule the drivers. Uh, the van would be parked locally with easy access for the drivers. Uh, we could look at evening and weekend service, but it would be really, really based on the availability of the drivers and so forth. And uh, we've never had this kind of a volunteer before. We've always had volunteer drivers uh, from our services that actually drove their own vehicle. So this would be a different kind of volunteer that we've ever had before. And again, this training, because it is a wheelchair uh, handicap accessible van, uh, we would have uh, trainings on that uh, to help those drivers uh, understand that concept and so forth. So um one of the things that again, we're here to basically have is any questions that you would have on it? But um, once we get a little more details on that service and so forth, we want to come back and, and present and so forth. Again, more details as to uh, again, how it's going to happen, how do you access it? How does it work? Uh, and so forth. But again, this was more of an introductory piece and uh, also seeing if there's any questions, comments, concerns on again, uh, how we do this and um, also, uh, also want to engage again your area uh, and understand what it, what kind of needs uh, your individual city uh, and our surrounding area will need as far as transportation.
Rick here. Um, for them to uh, for any of the elderly and the um, disabled to use it, do they call? Um, um, the same, the same number for uh, um Quicklink or Smart Link, sorry?
Sure. Uh, at this point in time, we're, we're thinking about having organizations reference uh, people to this service. So in other words, like the CAP Agency or uh, the Food Shelf uh, will contact us and say, hey, this, this uh, person needs uh, delivery of food. Or, or uh, uh, could be the Fish Network uh, saying, hey, this uh, people, these people need uh, transportation for a week because their cars broke down. Or again, thinking about that type of uh, piece and so forth, or it could be a senior center uh, that uh, they know of that needs uh, somebody in there, needs some uh, medical transportation for a week or whatever the case may be. So at this point, that's the, the avenue we're thinking about. Um, that doesn't mean, again, as we further get further down this road that we decide know that we need that direct piece uh, and so forth. But at this point in time, we're thinking more of the organization finding the people uh, and then uh, referencing to, to this service.
And it won't cost anything to the cities, huh?
At this point in time, uh, not at the cities at this, at this point, correct? The, the grant is covering most of the costs. But we would like to see basically is uh, the ability for the area to take over at some point in time. So in other words, our, our, our point of the grant is to kind of build it uh, and take it and then uh, build it up to that point where again, the uh, area that has the uh, um, the ability can take that uh, over and run that system that way.
Is there going to be a van in each community, Alan, or is it just one van get gets picked up someplace?
It depends upon the um, what kind of demand we have. So we have in the grant up to three vans uh, for the four communities. So, but there, there, the grant comes available every year. So it, it all depends upon how the, the success, I would call it, um, is the area um uh, have enough demand basically for the use of it. Uh, or can two areas maybe share the vehicle? Uh, for instance, I think of um, Elka New Market and New Prague, you know, is there enough demand for the cities to have together? Or does, is there enough demand in the city of New Prague uh, to stand alone? That, again, that's part of our uh, uh, the nice part about a grant is you have the time to build it up and, and find out where your uh, specific needs really are.
Okay.
And Alan, for the city of New Prague, I think one of the challenges that we have is that we don't have a senior center per se. Um, we, we don't have, well, we have the Food Shelf, but we have to my knowledge, a lot of seniors, quite elderly that live in their own homes that could certainly use you, this, this type of service. So I would think to get utilization high that some sort of a call-in scheduling by the individual might be useful. Um, I think you, you would get a broader uh, number of people using the service since we don't have anything that's centralized.
Correct. And here's another nice part about this particular grant. Uh, a lot of times, uh, as you guys are fairly aware, uh, New Prague is divided uh, by that county line and so forth. This particular grant does not care about that border. So as you know, uh, Met Council and, and so forth, it's, it uh, says no, we shouldn't have services cross the line and so forth. And Mendat uh, on the Lissure side has to, you know, kind of worry about that also. Uh, this grant doesn't look at that border. Uh, so in other words, uh, we can easily travel across that uh, the county line and so forth to perform trips and so forth. Uh, and, and that's another uh, key piece to this is that uh, there's more flexibility in the use of this vehicle. Um, again, the primary source or primary use of it should be senior and disabled. But again, it is not uh, limited to that alone.
Right, but my point being is that in, to get that utilization higher, um, we don't have these organizations like a senior center that would be able to know that there's a need out there and call it into you. Uh, we have the Food Shelf which they you know, certainly I think would take advantage of this wonderful service. So I would think maybe at some point in time you would hopefully support a call-in system where the individual who actually needs the service is able to call in and schedule.
I agree, uh, but again, we're kind of deciding which kind of, or what city uh, is, is going to need what uh, and kind of building it from the bottom up, uh, understanding uh, that piece. So um, not everybody might want, want that. So we want to kind of keep it flexible uh, and, and not necessarily hard, hard uh walls up and so forth.
Right, yeah, and I'm not suggesting that at all. I'm, I'm just saying that we do have a lot of, of elderly that um, live in their own homes, um, but we don't have a senior center. So there isn't a place these people congregate and, and learn about the needs of others. Um, hopefully as things open up, you know, there might be some wonderful um ways to integrate your services uh, such as our um, aquatic and fitness center that we have uh before the virus hit, it was a very highly used by our seniors because there was a meeting room with coffee and they'd get together and read the paper and all that wonderful thing. So um uh, uh, and I'm just putting it out there. I'm not criticizing anything that you're thinking about doing. It's just that if you're relying on specific senior groups, some of the small cities don't have that in place. We don't have a senior center. So um that, that can be a challenge for some people.
You brought up exactly, this is Stacy, you brought up exactly the example that I belong to the Fitness and Aquatic Center. So I, it breaks my heart to go and not see the seniors that gathered that left their homes and that was a pseudo meeting place, often on a daily basis. And from an outreach perspective, what we're going to do is roll our sleeves up within the New Prague community and go out and have conversations and find out where those gaps are. That, that one would certainly be top of my list along with some of our other senior living and assisted living.
Mm-hmm.
Understand where those gaps are and how we can work through them. Um, because the goal is to improve this and in a place where we know there's some gaps, where we have people that have had to retreat to their homes and when it's safe um, and we can start moving people around again. Their circumstances may have changed. Maybe they are no longer comfortable driving. Maybe it's not an option anymore. Um, and so that's the spirit with which we're approaching the city and why we're speaking to you this evening is just to kind of create awareness around this and to acknowledge that we need more information to understand how best to serve this community and how best to go to mail and understand are, are, there are people that can't make their appointments because of lack of transportation, for example. Or you, um, so that's, that's the commitment we have is to roll up our sleeves and really understand if we've got an asset like this that's available in our more rural communities. Um, we need the community to help us know best and, and point us in the right direction.
True. Thank you, Stacy. I appreciate that.
Good question. Um, Alan, um, uh, inside this uh, it's called a Hop Scott. It's on, it's this form. Now, do you want that to be hung up in some of the elderly buildings?
Uh, we'll be, kind of, as Stacy said, we're kind of, we're starting to get that marketing piece out there and so forth. Uh, so yes, at some point in time, we will be looking for uh, local support and so forth of, of that. Uh, the banner, the uh, the whole nine yards, uh, we, uh, this is really new. In fact, uh, Stacy just got some of this uh, information and, and uh, some of this uh, uh, marketing approach uh, just this week. So um we're glad that we could uh, actually put it on this. Uh, we presented at the Jordan last weekend uh, didn't have any kind of nice uh, visuals for that. So this is good.
Alan, I got a question for you too. Um, so let me get this straight. So this grant would only last for a small period of time and then you'd be looking for the city to take over those costs. Is that correct?
We're hoping that again, the way we set everything up and so forth, um, again, the, the van is a fifty-fifty match. So the county's paying half, the grant's paying half. Uh, and our goal would be to kind of again, generate and actually make this uh, uh, that's why the volunteer driver piece is a, a key factor. That should be able to keep the cost very low. And again, uh, hopefully by that point in time, uh, the fares uh, that would be collected from the people would be enough to actually uh, support that uh, and keep that going at that point. So that's the, that's the ultimate piece is can we have enough ridership to uh, and, and affairs collected from that ridership to support the whole program?
Okay, so we, we could look at other transportation around the Twin Cities and see that it's never been self-sustaining. Uh, whether it's light rail or buses or you know, anything, even cable cars when they had them back in the fifties and got rid of them. But um, I guess my worry is, and then the, the second point that I wanted to make too, is that you said that this grant allows for Lissure County people to be picked up. But if there's another grant, um it, what's the possibility that they say, no, it has to remain in Scott County and then we alienate half of our town from a service that they get on one side of the street, but not the other? Cause didn't you say it was this, this grant allowed for pickup in Lissure? Because didn't you say it was this, this grant allowed for pickup in Lissour?
Yes, it does allow for, again, it doesn't, doesn't take in, a lot of the grants that we've applied for before are usually very specific to staying in Scott County or servicing only Scott County. Whereas this one does allow for that borderless, I guess, call it, type of, of, again, especially for a city like New Prague that is divided by that, the county lines before, but that would not be an issue for this particular grant.
For this grant, right. But if we went for another grant or things changed, then theoretically that could stop. Is that correct? Am I, am I understanding that correct? If a, if a different grant came out from the county, they might say Lissour cannot utilize this. Is that correct?
I guess I, it would all depend on how that is, that looked at and so forth. Ideally, this would again continue and be able to actually, for instance, this particular Live Well at Home grant is something that can be renewed every three, four years and so forth. So even if that van, again, you know, that's probably got a van, five to seven year type process and so forth, or, or lifespan. We could go back to that grant and again, renew that grant for another purpose and keep this, this going. Again, their purpose is to again, if, if we can have this in this more rural areas and keep people living and in their homes longer over the course of that time. That's where we really start to come ahead on this because it's been proven that the longer people can live in their homes, there's less cost to the state, county, city and so forth. So that, that is the purpose of it. And hopefully again, so the key is really that the funding for this type of grant continues.
So can I jump in just to make a couple of comments to try to directly hit your question head on? I think the way that we're trying to set it up right now is to be flexible around the borders rather than to be like a lot of our other programs have to be pretty on the border and whether or not we can cross service. I think the one piece that we don't have a good answer for, and Alan kind of alluded to, is that we're hoping we can set the service up so that they'll pay for its operating expenses by the fares. But long-term, when we have to replace the van, if we can't get another grant, then they, then we'll probably have to have some discussions about how, how we move forward with it if the service is always successful.
Well, I guess my, my fear is, is that, and I just, what I said before is that there really has not been any mode of public transfer, transformation, transportation that I've, from my understanding, that has ever been self-sufficient. And I guess the one thing I don't want to do is get this in a situation where they come in for a year or two, and then all of a sudden the county doesn't have a grant and then turns it all over to the city and it's a losing money. And then it puts us in a tough spot because you've, over the course of a few years, have made people dependent on it. And now it's just added more to our budget than our, the, our needing of funding it. Because once we give a service, then we can't really pull it away. So I, I guess I would like to see when you guys come back, if you guys could have some estimates of if we don't have a volunteer and we have to pay drivers, you know, what does that cost? And do we have to insure them? And then are we going to be stuck with insuring the van? And, and, you know, there's, there's a myriad of fees that could add up to a big chunk of something that is or is not going to be fully utilized and the fares paying for the service.
I think one of the keys to that, oh, go ahead.
You're asking a lot of good questions and those are the things that we're, you know, just trying to gauge level of interest and, and figure out how to it might best be structured. And it may be from community to community.
And I was going to say it all depends so too on what the actual partners are and so forth. As you said, is, is food shelf, is cap going to be a huge partner? Is, is fish going to be another partner in that engaging the, the local churches and so forth? So again, we haven't defined a lot of that type of pieces yet either. So that also plays into, you know, even the operations and the, again, overall cost. But we will have, we will have those kind of numbers for you the next time, as far as what it will cost to do these types of things. And then our plan at this point in time, so have some better numbers for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you too, Lisa.
Here, I've got some that I didn't hear Alan touch on as to, you know, where are you intending to be able to house the van? And where you're not going to have full-time employees and just volunteers? How are you going to maintain, you know, the, the operational oversight of that van? And who's doing the, the normal maintenance and those kinds of things? Because as you end up with multiples of different volunteers trying to drive the van, everybody has different driving capability. And we all know that the maintenance on taking care of those vehicles, that somebody's going to have to be responsible in checking on that. And so I guess there would be questions as you evaluate this as to I'd be interested in trying to understand how you're going to address those type of operating questions.
Yep. At this point, we are actually thinking about the, the libraries as a parking spot and so forth. Then also that's where they could access the vehicle with keys and so forth. At this point, the county would be maintaining them. So that again, keeps that, that piece of again, continuity as far as at this point in time also. So.
Well, as I mentioned to Stacy, when we talked about that last week is that you know, that's easy to look at keeping those located at or near libraries. And that's okay during the the nice spring, summer and early fall. But when you get into the winter and you get snowfalls, and that is that who's going to be around to move that when our city crews have to come in and clean out the parking lot or to try to work around that, that, you know, if we got that first snowfall that we did back in October this year, you know, it's very easy for those things to get snowed in. And then who's going to take the time to, to get it dug out and ready to go to perform services? And so, you know, it's, it's nice to have volunteers, but you know, you're going to have challenges no matter where you try to keep this in, in that respect.
Understood. And yeah, and actually that's, again, that's why we're leaving it kind of open that again, will this be one share between two communities, one between three communities? Is it going to be? So again, how, how will this look for each community is, is really kind of up in the air at this point.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Herman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, thank you. I wish you the best. It's an exciting possibility.
Pretty cool. Have a good night, everybody.
You too.
Good night.
Good night. All right. Number six on the agenda. Mr. Johnson, you want to take that?
I'll take it. And then if need be, I'll let either Glenn or Matt weigh in. You took action early in January where you appointed Matt Rinden to the Public Works Director position to replace the retiring Glenn Schneke, that we've gone back and attempted to backfill the Public Works Supervisor position. And we did advertise that, that vacancy, pending vacancy effective here on the 26th. And with that, we posted it internally in all the city departments for the five business days, as is spelled out and required in the personnel policy. We had two employees who submitted their applications for the position in accordance with the, the normal application process. Their materials were reviewed, evaluated, and we had interviews with both of those individuals. Matt and Glenn and I were all involved in those interviews. And following that, it was Matt's recommendation that Mr. Josh Henin be promoted from maintenance worker to the maintenance, the Public Works Supervisor position. Glenn and I, as I indicated, were both there. We concur with Matt's recommendation. We tried to give you a little bit of background of Josh's background in the memo. And so effectively, my recommendation after listening to both Matt's Glenn's input, put forward the summary at the bottom of my memo with the recommendation that the promotion be effective February 26th. That he moved from grade step, grade seven, step seven, that he moved to that and his hourly rate of pay be 3419, 90 probation period, that he complete the MMUA First Line Supervisory Training Course in the job description for this position. It only spells out that that has to occur within the first three years of taking the position. I think it's going to occur much earlier. Josh was scheduled to take it this last year. It was canceled by MMUA due to the COVID situation and that a six-month evaluation be held in September. I don't know if there's anything more, Matt, you want to, to add to the recommendation or to weigh in? I will tell you that, you know, anytime you've got more than a couple of people vying for one position, that when you have to make the decision in the selection, there will be some that will be happy and there will be some that are unhappy. I would tell you that we simply just didn't use a dartboard and throw darts to select who the individual was going to be, that, you know, we certainly go through a lot of consternation and debate and discussion. I can tell you that we had numerous hours of discussion between Matt and Glenn and I trying to take a look at the essential responsibilities of the position and weighed a, a, a lot of elements to try to arrive at a recommendation that we bring to you. And so we don't go through this process lightly. We take it very seriously. And yet we won't make everybody happy in the recommendation phase of doing this. Matt, was there something that, I see your microphone went, went green. Was there something else you wanted to add that I didn't touch on?
Nope. I think you covered it. Everything I would say. I guess I just turned my microphone on if someone had some questions.
I do. I have a few questions. So through the process, I mean, are you, and this goes back to, to the last meeting when, and it was nothing personal, Matt. I hope you didn't take it personal. I just have always had a a difference of opinion that there should be a formula where a scoring formula, like a lot of companies use in, in, during the interview process to find the right candidate. And so, I mean, I'm just curious. I mean, the, did you contact all the references for both employees? Did, did you guys take into account disciplinary records? It, it just isn't a length of service issue. But I'm just, you know, the, the, the training background that both individuals have and, and my feeling was that one had completed and one hadn't yet. But I just want to make sure you do that. And the reason I worry about this process is if this would have been another situation and perhaps a female or a person of color or something, I don't want them to come back and say, well, this is, you know, you asked these questions of this individual versus this, these questions of another individual and put the city at some type of liability. That's my biggest concern. And I think if, if we had a formula where there was a scoring formula, that we might come up with different overall results based on different things. So was all that done? I mean, were all references?
Let me take that before Matt weighs in is that we use a training and experience rating worksheet when we have numerous applications in the initial submittal of what comes in for a position in an outside hiring. So if we get 20, 30, 40 applications, yes, we do have a rating worksheet where number one, they have to meet the certain minimums. And then secondly, based on their training and experience, there's different rating points to get that. From there, we take the top, let's say, 10 employees or not employees, but applicants based on their points. And we then do telephone interviews. And from there, then we narrow it down to what might be the top four or five individuals that we bring in for interviews. So yes, we have used a rating worksheet process in the outside hiring when we have the start of the outside hiring. In this case, where we had two internal applicants, we don't have to go through that same T and E rating process. And so we take them because they are both current employees and it is different than trying to hire somebody from scratch from the outside coming into the system. And so, yes, we sat down and we looked at everything that you just raised and take a look at it. There were none. I went back and double-checked the application, Sean. There were no references on any of the applications that were made for this position. There were individuals that they worked for, but there were no references provided. We went through that when any of those two, and I can only refer back to when Mr. Henon was originally hired about seven years ago, then we checked references. So when taking a look at it now, I went back and checked with Matt and Glenn, and what got checked was the confirmation of a previous supervisor that Josh had reported to that we had on that. Neither one of the applicants provided any references. And so our decision-making is significantly based on what their work experiences have been within the street department for the last number of years that they have both worked for us. Josh has been with us for seven. Jeff happened to be with us for 16 years. Josh, in addition to his seven with the city of New Prague, had spent 10 years in the private sector working for construction companies as a pipe layer in that. But predominantly, we're basing the selection off their interviews and their prior work experience with the street department.
Okay. So everything was considered disciplinary records, training, references or work history or whatever you want to refer to it as, or the references going back to the first initial resume that was put in. I just, you know, I just want to make sure because this came out of a question, not from the individual that left, but from other city staff that couldn't believe the decision was made. And it was very disheartening given the way that, right on top of your comment at our meeting in January, that we had already identified an individual within the street department that would be good, and then was reported on in the paper. And it dissuaded several employees, city employees from applying because they figured that the decision had already been made. I just want to get to the bottom of it and just, you know, and let, that's why I pass that information on to you. I want to say it to Matt and I wanted to say it to Glenn, that I don't know what the right formula is or if, if not, but it's a little demoralizing when you have multiple people within the city that maybe disagreed with the decision or whatnot. But I have to ask the question.
That, that's bound to happen. And I can assure you, when you asked, we asked the same questions. All of our processes are designed and reviewed with the city attorney's office and has been over the years to make sure that we're avoiding putting ourselves in any position that we're going to get accused of not going to get accused of not acting appropriately in the HR arena as it relates to whether it be minorities, females, or what have you. The, the questions that we asked of both of these candidates in the interviews were exactly the same. So we don't, we, we work extremely hard to ensure that we don't have any part of our process that is suspect in the sense that we have to worry about claims of violations, that we've got an improper hiring process where we have to worry about the city being subject to any accusations about that process. And, and so I, I personally take great pride and we work very closely with the city attorney in, in all of our hiring processes and how we've structured and what we've done is on par with what is needed to ensure that we're doing that correctly. In the end, as, as you and I have talked earlier, is decisions can come down and when you've got two applicants for one position, somebody's going to be happy, somebody's not, you're going to have other people in the department and others who may disagree with it. Well, you know what? The people that have to make that decision is the immediate supervisor, as the department head and myself in providing a recommendation to you. And so we tried to make sure so that we just didn't put Matt in a position as a new hire into the public works director position, that both Glenn and I took the time to be a participant in this process as well, to try to make sure that we vetted all of the different areas. We had discussions. We've taken a look at prior work performance in previous years in who we think can do the best job long term. And unless you want to take over the hiring process, or you want the council to do that, in that case, you probably don't need Matt, you don't need Glenn, you don't need myself in that process, that you guys can handle it. There, there's no question that there are going to be those who disagree and don't support our choice, and that's bound to happen. And I, I can't make that go away.
Yeah, no, my concern is about from the taxpayer and that we're, we're doing it the proper way. You just explained it, Mike, and I sat for two hours with you this afternoon. I heard everything you said. We don't have to rehash it again. But the fact of the matter is, is one employee had disciplinary actions against them, one didn't, one has length of service over another one. Whether or not the right references were called needs, I think needs to be addressed and just, I think the process is, is flawed in a certain aspect, so.
And, and I guess I wouldn't disagree that you, you're entitled to your opinion. But as I tried to tell you, we've done everything within our power to ensure that we do things in the correct hiring fashion. And I can't tell you how much we've changed that over the years to what we do now versus what once used to be done in the city. And that has been done with the assistance and the guidance from the city attorney's office. And I have no questions that we are technically and legally handling it correct. And yes, as you take a look at it, somebody may have a disciplinary action as far as a, a written warning for an incident that may be occurred. You know, none of our employees, including myself, are, are perfect. And so, yes, we take a look at it. We assess the severity of that. Has there been a history of that? Is it an isolated incident? We take a look at what the training is, what do they have as far as classes that are applicable or not? We take a look at their work experiences, whether it be just within the city, whether it be with other jobs. And collectively analyzing all that, we try to arrive at a decision, which is what we did in this case.
Well, I thought there was more than one disciplinary action. Maybe I'm wrong, but, you know, that certainly.
You know, we can talk about this.
There's, there's no employee that can honestly tell you or anybody else that they've never done anything wrong, including myself. Did somebody get written up on it because it was a bigger incident than the other one? Possibly. But for some employee to say, while he was disciplined and I've never been disciplined, I'll disagree with that. I've been here a long time. And everybody makes a mistake. My theory is you put in enough hours, you work hard enough, you have enough trucks, vehicles and men moving around, accidents are going to happen. If that same accident happens continually, that's a real problem. Things are going to happen. I get a little disappointed when I hear that there's employees pointing fingers at somebody going, well, he was disciplined for it. Oh, I've never been disciplined because I can argue that with a lot of employees here.
Sure.
Okay.
We have to be careful of going where you.
Yeah, you're right. I had this conversation with Mike and thought we could go a little bit different way. I just want to make sure that everything was considered in a proper way because I don't want it to ever come back that we're somehow not doing things the right way and, and that not all situations are taken care of.
And we've got our assurances from Mike and Glenn that that has happened along with our attorney. So I, I hope that that satisfies your questions.
All right. Any other discussion? Otherwise, I would take a motion to approve Mr. Henon.
Move to approve.
Bruce is second. Okay, so my, Rick made the motion to approve Josh Henon with the conditions. Bruce seconded it. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Bruce?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Sean?
No.
And Juric votes aye. Okay. The next thing on the agenda is to approve the low quote and contract with Deutsche Construction for the removal of their armory.
In Friday, you got the demolition of the former New Prague Armory building. We requested quotes from four contractors on January nineteenth. The quotes needed to be back in by noon on February fourth. The four quotes we got was from Deutsch Construction, M A A C Incorporated, J J D Companies, and P A Whit Companies. The lowest quote was twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. The demolition specifications that each contractor received called for removal of the HVAC system, the building foundation down to the footings, removal of the sidewalk shrubs in the flagpole, capping of the water and sewer services at the right of a line, along with site and turf restoration. This vest was removed by M A A C Incorporated back in October, I believe, October of two thousand twenty. Upon starting the work, the contractor has fifteen calendar days to complete all demolition and final completion honored before May twenty-eighth. Substantial completion is April thirtieth. We felt it necessary to give them a little bit of extra time in case we have a cold spring where they're not able to plant grass seed and, and kind of finish it all up. So that's where the May twenty-eighth came into play there. Staff recommends that council approve the low quote from Deutsch Construction at twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars and his projected start date would be April twelfth of two thousand twenty-one. Funding for this project was decided to come from the four ninety-nine account. One thing I did forget to mention that the estimated cost that we had potentially in the budget for it was decided to use the four ninety-nine account was fifty thousand dollars. And that was based off of a number would naturally an increase each year that I received from B C M Construction back in two thousand fifteen. So again, staff recommends that we go with the low quote from Deutsch Construction for twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars.
Okay, Bruce made a motion to approve Deutsch at twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Hey, Maggie, I heard second. Any other discussion? Just quick, quick, what's four ninety-nine? Is that our, is that our budget?
No. Patty, can you help me with that? I'm not sure I can explain it totally.
It's a capital improvement fund that we have doing that we put excess money that we get after all of our projects have been completed and the debt has been paid off on, if there's any.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Bruce, how do you vote? Rick?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
And Juric, I vote aye. Thank you. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is consider modifications to the twenty-one, twenty-two liquor licenses fees.
Following direction at the last meeting, we went back to take a look at making modifications so that you could see it in front of you. And so what you have is the liquor licenses on the first summary sheet are as of the action you took on January fifth, where the only one that was changed was the reduction in the on sale liquor licenses from twenty-seven hundred down to thirteen fifty. So if you use the fifty percent reduction that you had talked about at the last meeting, I'm showing that on the second sheet in your packet showing those reductions compared to what the liquor license fees were at when we adopted our resolution on permits and fees for twenty-one. And so if you go to the last page, that is showing what the fees would look like with a fifty percent reduction across all fronts, with the exception of applicants still needing to be able to pay the state of Minnesota, the two hundred and fifty dollars for the renewal of their consumption and display. That's one that we couldn't change. But the cities was reduced from the three hundred down to the one fifty, as well as all the other ones were reduced by fifty percent. The overall economic amount of making these additional changes is a reduction in the liquor license revenues totaling about three thousand two hundred and fifty and combined with what you did on January fifth, which totaled about fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. We've seen nearly a little over eighteen thousand dollars or fifty-three percent of the budgeted revenues reduced if you follow through and take this action tonight. And if you do, we'll have to come back with actually changing the fees in the fee permit resolution. The only remaining ones under discussion that, you know, you need to take a look at is we don't have on this sheet, because they just come in on an ad hoc basis, is we have a hundred dollar fee for the temporary on sale non intoxicating liquor license for one to four days or the on sale intoxicating one to four days. Those are both each a hundred dollars for those license fees. And then the other question is, should there be a reduction to the, what was it? On the, on the off sale that we have one, two, three, four, five, six, you know, whether you should really be reducing the off sale liquor license for the primary ones would be, well, it's City Club, Coburn's, The Corner Bar, Checkers. Excuse me, I'm sorry, not the off sale liquor. Yeah, the off sale liquor. All of those entities that sell liquor that people have been able to procure and to buy liquor from the liquor stores or these other off sale sites, you know, is it necessary to reduce that? So. Sorry, that's just a reminder that the mayor and I have to go to an eight o'clock meeting for the fire pension. So, but you have in front of you, it shows the reduction to fifty percent. But do we do anything with the, the temporary ones that I just described? Or do you change the off sale as well? So that's your call.
Discussion.
I thought we were just going to do the on sale intoxicating one. I thought that, that was the only thing that I thought we were going to do. All the rest of this, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of reducing the licenses for off sale because they have been, had the opportunity to continue with those sales in most cases. I also would not be in favor of reducing the temporary on sale intoxicating because again, those are, you know, as they come across, you know, for special events that have not been impacted.
I agree with Maggie. Well said.
Yeah, I do too. Is it just that on sale intoxicating? Is that what you're talking about, Meg?
Off sale.
Yeah.
And the temporary licenses.
Yeah, you make a motion on that one in a second.
So who wants to make a motion or is there any other discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Sean makes a motion. You want to state your motion, please?
That we reduce the on premise for, I believe it was three remaining accounts, the Orioles, the New Prague Orioles licensed Strike Force Bowl and Knights of Columbus, which were not part of our first action in reducing those, those fees fifty percent. And only those licenses that are affected. The off sale were not impacted at the level that the on premise was.
So Sean, I, I think what we have to do is we have to make a motion that includes that anybody that is applying for an on sale license that their fees would be reduced. We can't just carve out certain entities like the Orioles.
Okay, that was, that's fine. Let's just.
I just want to keep it clear, yeah. Does that, does that work for you, Sean?
That's perfect, yep. That's fine. We can take that language out.
That, that was our understanding is you wanted to reduce that licensing category by fifty percent and whoever has that type of license would see that reduced fifty percent adjustment. Was, was that not what you wanted?
That is perfectly said, Mike. Thank you, yes. That, that is my motion.
So you were looking at doing all of the other, other ones.
On premise.
Beyond the on sale liquor license that you did on January fifth as part of this action here tonight, with the exception of what Maggie was saying, is not the off sale or any of the temporary liquor licenses.
That is correct. That is correct, yes. That is my motion.
I have that written.
Or Maggie seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Bruce, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Juric votes aye. Okay. We have a, we need to set a public hearing date and introduce ordinance for vacation of a public right of way.
Yep, so I'll be very brief in my remarks here tonight. So as the council recall, the utility commission is applying for a variance to add on to their building at their existing site off of First Avenue and Seventh Street there. The particular application shows that their building addition would go partially into what we discovered to be previously unvacated right of way. That's highlighted in the yellow here. It's a sixteen and a half foot. It doesn't call it an alley, it doesn't call it a street on this platform eighteen eighty-four, but it is public right of way. So we need to vacate this little strip of land. And what we'll end up doing is once this is vacated, we'll combine this sliver of land that's. And what we'll end up doing is once this is vacated, we'll combine this sliver of land, uh, that's located north of the right of way along with the remainder of the parcel and kind of clean that up in the process, along with that variance for the building and get everything, um, in a good, uh, good shape for, uh, moving forward for that building addition. So, uh, what we're looking for tonight is to pass the resolution, which is item, um, number one of the two items tonight. To set the hearing for March first, we'll notify the utility companies and put a public hearing notice in the paper. And then the second item is to introduce the ordinance vacating that right of way, which is also included in the packet for your review tonight. And again, it's just this little yellow highlighted strip that, uh, we're looking to vacate. We don't believe there's any utilities in there. But we need to go through the formal process as outlined in our city charter and state law.
Okay. So with that said, I would take a motion to approve resolution number twenty-one, zero, two, one, six, zero, two. Setting a public hearing to vacate.
So moved.
Maggie moves on that resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Bruce seconded it. Um, any discussion? Otherwise, Bruce, Bruce, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Juric, aye. Okay, and then, um, the introduction of the ordinance.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number three twenty, vacating certain public right of way in the plat of New Prague outlets.
Okay, Maggie made the motion to, um, approve or introduction of ordinance number three twenty. Is there a second?
Second.
Bruce made a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, um, Bruce, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
And jury votes aye. Okay, next is the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Rick has made a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Sean seconded it. Any discussion? Hearing none, uh, Bruce, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Maggie?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Juric? Oh, that's me. I. Long day. Okay. So now we're to miscellaneous and, um, I think everybody received the packet from Mike today. Um, just, uh, just want to say it was with I was surprised, um, to get it, but hey, I understand too, so, um, I guess, uh, I would like to see this on the agenda to talk about maybe how we're gonna go forward with this at the next meeting, if that's okay with everybody.
Yep.
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. Anything else? Does anybody else have any miscellaneous? Seeing none, um, I'd take a motion to adjourn. Yo?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, Rick made the motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Maggie seconds. Um, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good evening.
Good night, everybody.
Hey, Dwayne?
Yeah.
I'm going to call you and, uh, my, uh, on the caller ID, it comes up Booney Bang.
Yeah, I know.
I'm going to give you a call. I need to talk to you.
Yeah, can you, I gotta go to another meeting?
Yeah, I'll call you tomorrow.
Okay, that's very fine.
All right, cool.
Very fine.
Good night, everybody.